Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2017 Milford Board of Selectmen meeting. The first item on the agenda, we're happy to announce Reagan McGrath, who is the 10th grade Milford High School winner of the Voice of Democracy Award for her essay, "My Responsibility to America." The essay program is sponsored by the National VFW and Commander Steve P. Tac is regrettably not here, so we'll begin. And on behalf of the board, I want to say thank you and congratulations for representing Milford and for getting this award. And we just wanted to ask, I think I'll start by asking you Reagan, what exactly prompted you to want to get involved in this and how did you select that topic?
Well, I, in my history class, my teacher, Mr. Cullen, he helped us a lot. He gave us the prompt. It's about my responsibility to America, so he just really wanted us to break it down and just interpret it how we'd see America and how we'd want to be raised. So I just personally, I put like my heart, I put a lot of time into trying to get all the topics of America and what like my future would be like in it and like respect to the soldiers and how the community works and it just turned into that.
And I know you have a family that has a long history in the military as well, so I know that must have made it even more personal. We want to thank your family members for their service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll go to the members of the board, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had the opportunity to be at the Senior Center and see the presentation room Commander P. Tac and Mr. Cullen was there also, as well as the Principal Benash. So, you know, just like to commend you for taking on, you know, this extracurricular work. I think it's very mature that you did that at this particular point in your career. And also, like we did the last time, you know, just recognize the VFW for sponsoring this contest and really getting the young people involved in community awareness and also the staff at Milford High School to facilitate, you know, your participating in this essay program. And last but not least, your parents who, you know, at least your dad looks kind of tired, I think he was up watching the game the whole night, but it's nice to see him here, so, you know, congratulations and it's great to see young people, you know, get involved.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you Brian. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reagan, you're obviously a very bright young lady, you're very nice and you always have been and you've got a great smile and we are lucky to have you in our schools and are lucky to have you as a participant here. So, thank you very much and thank you for taking on this added duty because obviously between dance and school and everything else, you probably had to squeeze it in, so, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. And so, we have a citation, but first I'm going to go to my colleague, Selectmen and now State Representative Brian Murray, who has one, I think, for you separately.
I do. Now, you may have one from Representative Fernandez, so that's what they call now a collector's item.
That's a throwback.
Yeah, that's vintage. So, what we have here is a citation, in your honor, from the House of Representatives, be it known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offered sincerest congratulations to Reagan McGrath in recognition of winning the Voice of Democracy essay contest sponsored by the Robert C. Friscotti Post 1544 VFW. The entire membership of the House extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given that this is dated January 23, 2017, it's signed by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and myself as State Representative. Congratulations.
And not to be outdone, the town of Milford also has a citation for you. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, be it known, we hereby offer our congratulations to Reagan McGrath in recognition of receiving the Voice of Democracy Award for your essay, "My Responsibility to America." On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And this is given by myself, William Buckley as Chairman, Brian Murray as a member of the Board, and William Kincaid. Congratulations. Keep doing great. This is the fun part of what we do. Okay, so thank you again, and with that...
Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
How you doing?
We should have gotten one for him.
He's a Patriot fan.
You're right. Everybody's a Patriot fan today.
Yeah, you're right. No, the still majority of the country just say anybody but the Patriots.
Oh, please, we can't.
And we've done the citation, we've completed the citation, now we'll go for a signing of the warrant.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have the approval of the January 23, 2017 meeting minutes.
I'll move second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have invitation to speak, is there anybody here who's not on the agenda that would like to speak? Not seeing anybody, we'll go to the individual action items, public hearings and scheduled appointments. First item on the agenda is an application for a Class II license for 85 South Bow Street. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
And you're Mr. Whitaker?
Yeah.
Good evening. So, we have an application in front of us for Class II license for 85 South Bow Street. It's an LLC operated by Edward Whitaker, 226 Pond Street, Hopkinton, Mass. Going through the application now, but before we let you get started, I just, it's customary that we reach out to the department heads and make sure that, from the various boards and committees, that there's an understanding of what exactly is being done and whether there's any issues or concerns. I have from the Building Commissioner, this is an allowable use, buildings, restrooms, not handicapped accessible. The ZBA, I'm sorry, the Town Planner indicates that the ZBA permit from 111016, Planning Board site permit, 11717, in January, indicates a maximum of 12 unregistered vehicles at any one time. Tax collector indicates there's no outstanding taxes. Town Treasurer indicates there's no outstanding liens. The Fire Chief has no objections or concerns, and that's the same with the Police Chief. So, that's a great report from the individual department heads and boards. Your decision of the zoning board of appeals is in front of this board and indicates the same as has been said from the planning, that a maximum of 12 parking spaces for vehicles at any one time. You understand the conditions that were provided by the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll go to the members and see if they have any individual comments, questions, or concerns. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, everything seems to be in order, so I don't have any questions.
Okay, and Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just looking at the zoning board decision. Is the property still intended to have the multi-use there because it indicated that there was the warehousing space for the cut granite office and the solar energy company?
Correct.
Do you still have all of those uses on the property?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, and then this used car will be an additional use?
Correct.
Okay.
Basically in the front corner of the lot.
Okay.
It's a 9,000 square foot building.
Okay.
The entire, I don't know if you're familiar with the property?
Oh, yeah.
The entire back lot will be paved and, you know, I think there are 28 parking spots will be created in total.
Okay.
It'll be, you know, I think, an impressive transformation.
Yeah, I mean, it really is kind of the final piece in the puzzle in that neighborhood to really bring it to full development. And, I mean, you know, for those of us who've, you know, been around for a while, it's gratifying to see that area become the development that it is because there was a point in time when that was a very undesirable area and piece by piece, it's really developed into a very active vibrant part of the town, so, you know, I thank you for your participation in it and wish you all the success.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move second it.
I'll also vote in favor and echo the comments made by the members of the Board. That area was, and less desirable at one point, and it's great to see that you're participating in its revitalization and economic development, so...
My pleasure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Good luck.
So, with that, that vote is unanimous, so lots of luck to you.
All right.
And I think that's all we have, and you may just want to see the Town Administrator sometime tomorrow, the next day.
Okay.
For any license, for the license.
Okay, all right.
Good luck.
Good luck, Mr. Whitaker. Okay. Next, we have petition, I'm sorry, a public hearing notice for National Grid. Come on up. And for the benefit of the note taker, could you just state your name?
Yeah, Michael Fraser, National Grid.
Michael Fraser, okay. Mr. Fraser, welcome. So, I'll read from the notice of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given, the Milford Board of Selectmen has received the following petition. It's Plan Number 22118241. It was received, the Board received it from Massachusetts Electric Company, Purchase Street. National Grid requests to install a new solely owned pole, 17-84, an anchor just off the sidewalk to correct leaning poles along Purchase Street. And also for, you seek the permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires for the above or intersecting public ways for the purposes of making connections with such poles and buildings. As each of the petitions may desire for distributing purposes, obviously, the meeting is, the public hearing is today, and Butters were also invited to attend this hearing and participate in the discussion if they wish to do so. Why don't you give us an idea of what you're doing? We have a drawing here, it's sometimes difficult, so why don't you walk us through where we are on Purchase Street?
We had replaced a pole in front of 46 Purchase Street and due to, replaced pole 17, which is the one shown in the picture, one in front of House 46, as well as one on the other side of his house too, and due to regular replacement, one was a motor vehicle accident and all three poles are now leaning, so the one in front of, I believe it was pole 18 in front of pole, in front of House 46 was leaning the most, but we couldn't do this because it would be right in front of someone's, right in front of a, you know, white picket fence there. So, this was the next best option to try and fix those leaning poles.
So, it looks from the drawing, and it's not to scale, so it's very, it may or may not be to scale, but it looks like you're attempting to put a pole between 39 Purchase Street and 41 Purchase Street at the property line?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I'll go to the Board members, Brian, any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yeah, no, I'm pretty sure I recognize these poles and they definitely did some work.
Okay, and we're going to hear from the public in a minute, anybody here's wanted to comment on this, but I just wanted to see if there's any comments or questions for National Grid. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I don't have any questions, just looking forward to hearing from the Butters if there's any questions or comments.
Okay. For the purposes of the public hearing, why don't we do that and ask for if there's any Butters that would like to speak related to this topic? Yes, please. Go ahead and step right forward. Give you a microphone so everybody can hear you.
Just curious as to the scope of work, what's going to be involved in it? I don't know, I'm in 39A, so I'm probably the most affected by the pole.
Yep.
So, yeah, if you could just, I guess, run down what you guys are going to be doing, how it affects us, power shutdown, you know, what's involved. I know the pole across the street was hit and it was broken and now it's sistered up, so I don't know if it's an option to just replace that pole instead of adding a support pole across the street, so...
Can I answer?
Thank you, yes. Yes, please.
So, the one in front of pole 46, which is a, we just replaced, is already, the replaced pole is leaning away, so we tried replacing it, but the ground is just too, you know, too weak to hold it, so, and rather than putting all the poles on the other side of the road like we showed them so we can put guys, since they're already on the inside of the curve, we can't put push braces on there because the, for one, this gentleman wants to build a stone wall right there at 46, and so that would interrupt his plans there. So, this, the new pole won't have any electrical wires on it, it's just a guy wire going across the street just to pull this pole that way.
Okay.
So, it'd be right next, there's, so the front right of your property was a stone pillar, so it'll be right next to that and then a little sidewalk anchor so it doesn't go into your property at all.
So, is there going to be a guy wire coming down?
Yeah, but it's the one with the brace on the pole, so it only goes in about five feet, it's not going to go, you know, the full 15 feet. As far as power outages go, in regards to that pole, no, but they plan on cutting in some new primaries to put in some slack in that really tight span that's helping pull the poles over, so it may be a brief outage there, but they'll notify you, usually seven days in advance.
When would you guys be doing it, the day, night?
I'm not sure. I would guess springtime, I mean, this is the next step in it, so, I know, especially this gentleman at 46 is very concerned about it, so, I know it's a hot item on their menu, so maybe in the next few weeks, I'm not, I don't have the exact scheduling though.
Do you guys have any plans if that doesn't resolve the issue?
I think, I think we look at it once, if it doesn't, but between cutting and, you know, new wires, so it's slacking and putting pressure on the poles and that, that should help there.
And for my benefit, I don't mean to interrupt everybody, I wanted, for my benefit, the new wires, how do the new wire, how are the new wires going to help?
Right now, it's, they're very tight on the pole and it's going around a corner there, so it's pulling all the poles in.
It wants to pull.
Just leaning, so just, you know, cutting in, placing a new wire and, you know, put a little slack in each, in each span there to leave the pressure on the poles.
Okay, take the tension off.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we don't have the specifics in front of us, so in terms of the actual location, do you have a good sense, the way you just described it, where that pole would go?
Yeah, I think you guys staked it, somebody did.
Okay, all right, good, good, good. Any more comments or concerns? I know it's one of those prices to pay for uninterrupted power, hopefully, right? That and the slack in the wire helps that street, but this is what a public hearing's about and this Board has always given a lot of latitude to neighbors who, you know, are disrupted, and I can assure you, having experienced this before, when poles attempted to be put in the middle of properties and that type of thing, it's usually not something the Board looks favorable on, so we want to make sure you're comfortable. But if there's no more comments, I'll go to the Board members, Brian?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, just hoping that we do, he'll get, how many days notice, seven, you said?
Yeah, it's about two weeks.
Okay, is there any other additional information that you could provide the Town Administrator or National Grid could, just to make sure Kyle knows everything, whatever the plan is on the timeline, or will he not get anything until that seven day notice?
Probably won't get any until that seven day notice.
Okay.
If it's on the schedule, depending on weather and everything, so...
Okay. You can find it. Okay. Kyle took very good care of us at Woodland School for quite a long time, so want to make sure he was, I don't know if you guys realize that, he was on the property for a long time taking care of everybody, working for Shawman, right?
It was, yeah.
You look very familiar.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've been in a lot of the same meetings.
He's been there years up there. Yes, absolutely.
We've been in a lot of the same meetings and for the benefit, Kyle, your last name, just for the benefit of the recorder?
Reposo.
Reposo, okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, I'll make that unanimous, and that's a vote. All right?
All right.
Hopefully, everything goes well and it's to everyone's satisfaction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you, Kyle. I'm assuming there's nobody else here that wanted to speak on that topic, I didn't see any hands and I know the faces that are remaining, so, all right. So, we're now to the Town Administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief update on the Archer Rubber demolition. I'm sure you know that the demolition has begun on the site, the actual demolition of the existing buildings. It is expected they would, should be completely down, hopefully, this week, so we're getting to the end of at least that part of the project. I do want to update the Board on the Godfrey Brook FEMA grant. I'm pleased to report that Treasurer Chris Pillar has informed me that the town has received the grant monies for the Godfrey Brook project that was done at Congress Terrace and Main Street. We received $675,886.96. We received it within the last week. With this reimbursement, we have an approximate positive fund balance of $75,135, which could be used toward a future phase of the Godfrey Brook project. Chris will now prepare an article to rescind the authorized and outstanding debt of 1.1 million at the May town meeting, so want to thank mainly Scott, Chris, and Zach for their good work on that project. The Town Hall heater project, the heaters on the ground floor of Town Hall have now been replaced with new high efficiency units. This should result in an energy savings for the town and reduced maintenance costs, again, on behalf of the town. I want to thank Carlos Benjamin for his oversight and Mike Dean, Town Engineer, of that project. At the last meeting, I believe I was asked if we could get an MS4 litigation update. I did reach out and spoke with the person who is supervising the appeal. Basically, we're still in a holding pattern, the appeals have been consolidated in the Court of Appeals in Washington DC, and we're still waiting for a briefing schedule, so really, nothing new unfortunately to report there. The last item, and again, is the Middle School East Building. Again, as the Board members know, the school committee voted to declare the Middle School East Building surplus effective June 30 of this year. As the Board knows, it will now need to consider whether to market the building for sale, rental, or lease, looking towards what type of marketing avenues we would want to pursue. We also may need to decide to budget for and/or sponsor an article to market the property as well as being able to cover the operating expenses going forward. So, I've been speaking with Zach Taylor, we'll also be speaking with Rob Quinn at the school so that we can see what we may need to budget effective July 1st in the next year's budget, so that now has become the responsibility of this Board. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
And that's effective June, June 30th, and my only caution, everyone is to make sure that, you know, we go dust off the discussions that we had with the other consultant, I'm sorry, it doesn't come to mind, the name, but where we...
Cecil Group.
Cecil Group, thank you. With the Cecil Group, so that people become more familiar with that, and why don't we, I don't know if everybody still has a copy of that, has a copy, when we get three copies to the Board, and then we'll be talking about that in a future meeting, and by future, I mean coming up soon, because it's obviously not going to be helpful if the Board takes it up June 30th, but instead begins working to plan to accept that surplus building. The Godfrey Brook, could you give me that amount again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we received $675,886.96.
All right. That's real money, and we want to thank everybody who participated in applying for that grant, both from a town engineering standpoint, planning standpoint, highway, you know, that defrays the cost to the taxpayer and that's helpful to everyone when grants are coming in and doing those things, so, helping us. And as you said, with the $75,000 balance, it allows us to go into the engineering work for the next...
Next phase.
Next phase, outstanding. Are there any questions, comments for the Town Administrator regarding his report? Right?
No, you know, let me just, I guess, reiterate your support on the Godfrey Brook project, it was, you know, carried out very well. The road, Congress Terrace, I obviously have to go by it every day, so, you know, I monitored that project and, you know, it was a little inconvenient to the neighbors for a significant amount of time, but it was a very significant project and it was not an easy one. And, you know, a former town engineer, Vani Reese, I think deserves a lot of credit for coordinating that, along with Scott Christopher, the highway surveyor, for really kind of bringing it, you know, right down to the ground with the contractor and administering all of the different pitfalls, and then to get FEMA money on top of that to reduce the cost to the town, it was just a well-coordinated project.
Agreed.
And it's a good example of, I think, town officials and employees maximizing outside benefits for the benefit of Milford taxpayers, so it was a very good job.
Will?
No, I'm all set, thank you, Bill.
All right. So, with that, we'll go into old business, and with regard to old business, I know that we've been working with the Personnel Board, and, you know, over the course of the last couple of years, been talking with the Personnel Board, and there was some confusion as it related to, at least on my part, I'll say that, when the Personnel Board communicated to us last, the possibility of removing the Personnel Board, there's models that have HR functions that either complement that or replace it, but it's the Board's intent to add two members to keep it whole until any decision that this Board has or in town meeting has regarding HR functions or whatever. So, having said that, there's a letter that comes to us from Dennis Carroll, the Personnel Board Chairman. After working with different individuals and having them come to his meetings, some of them aren't even known to this Board, he submitted a request, asked for these two possible selections to Board vacancies. The names are Teresa Persico and James Dorval as the alternate. So, are there any comments or questions from the members of the Board?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Chairman's recommendation for Teresa Persico as the full-time member and James Dorval as the alternate.
I'll second that motion.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Yeah, we know Teresa has done some great work for the community, and hopefully, James Dorval has the opportunity to fill at some point. Next, we have IDC commission appointments, and before we get, before we begin, I just want to say I got a receipt to call tonight that Steve Treadle is withdrawing his application because of his current workload and would like to consider possibly reapplying at a future time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just going through here and knowing that Steve Treadle's no longer interested, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Robert Bullock, Attorney Ryan Avery, and Mr. Ronald Plutukas. And Mr. Plutukas has been waiting for some time to, I don't know the gentleman, but he's been waiting for some time to be appointed to a Board, and I'd like to get some folks involved.
Okay. And Mr. Wilson, who's in this packet, we just appointed, we just appointed last week to a different Board, so just a reminder.
Community use.
Yeah, community use, but I just wanted to remind everybody of that, if you didn't recall the name, and, okay. So, with that, there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Yeah, I'd be glad to second that, I mean, as I'm looking through the applications, generally on something like this, I try to go to the ones that are oldest first.
Okay.
When you look at it, Ryan Avery, that was June of 2014, Mr. Plutukas, that was December of 2014, Steve Treadle, but if he's going to withdraw, he would have been the next one. You're indicating that you don't think Chris Wilson would be interested in it, because he was, he would be...
I don't, but I also want to...
The older one, as opposed to Mr. Bullock.
Yeah, I also want to spread it around, my thinking is, I'll give you my opinion, since there's a motion and we're having some discussion on it. While I like to be considerate of the dates, I'm also try to be mindful of people that we are appointed to other committees and for people who want to get on, I'm also mindful of the skill sets that people are representing with their background, so it's, for me, it's a variety of things that complement that, so that's how, that's how I think of it.
Okay, I mean, I'll be glad to second the motion, I just didn't want to... Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll be glad to second the motion, I just didn't wanna skip over Chris Wilson because his application was older than Mr. Bullock's, but.
Yeah, we had a lot of people seeking to, to be appointed, right?
No, I just wanted to bring, no, I really appreciate that. Chris is a great guy, but he did express to me that he was quite happy with his appointment to community use and we'd like to dive into that.
Okay, all right, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. You clear, Jeannie, of which, okay. All right, under old business, anybody have anything else under old business, Brian?
I do not.
Will?
Uh, no.
I just wanted to bring up one topic on solar. Try to get an update from the town administrator on the question that we had at a prior meeting regarding the possibility for solar and the dollar savings to the community. If the various boards were to look, look into that, that communication went out to.
Yes, all.
Highway Sewer and.
The school, yes.
Have any of them responded yet?
They have all responded, but just indicating to me that they are still looking into it, but no definitive responses.
Can we just ask them for a date and when they think their deliberations would, it'd be interesting to see as we approach town meeting and ask for more money. Under new business, we have town administrators' annual town meeting date. Annual town meeting date is recommended here, May twenty-second, twenty-seventeen? Uh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. That provides for opening of the warrant, which would close, let's see, we open the annual town meeting warrant and closes Thursday, Thursday, March second. Okay? Uh, next, we have police chief, state-ordered traffic signs. In response to, I'm sorry, I should open this by saying that, this is a letter to town administrator Rick Vilani from Police Chief Tom O'Loughlin. And he has traffic sign requests at Stacy Middle School in response to an incident on April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixteen, which a crossing guard injured her hand when a vehicle came close to her. The Massachusetts Department of Labor standards conducted a workplace safety inspection and ordered that the school zone, no parking and crosswalk signs be installed in Spruce, on Spruce Street. So he's recommending the following. Police chief is recommending the installation of school zone twenty mile an hour in both directions on Spruce, Spruce Street. One of the signs can be replaced, can replace the existing one that says "Reduce Speed School." He's also recommending the removal of the "Reduce Speed School" sign. He's recommending further that there be an installation of no parking sign and elimination of the first parking space immediately south of the crosswalk on the Stacy Middle School side or northbound lane of the street. And then lastly, he's recommending installing a pedestrian crossing sign on each side in each direction of the crosswalk. Are there any comments? I know the board members have had the opportunity to read the various documents that have been provided by the chief. Are there any comments or questions?
No, I'll be glad to support the recommendations if you wanna make a motion.
Please.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that, I just wanna add that I received a couple of phone calls this, actually, this past week from parents queuing in near Stacy, saying that there's been a certain, certain traffic changes and quite a, quite a hike time-wise, like twenty, twenty-five minutes to actually, sorry, I'm fighting a cold, to get the kids dropped off in a lot of traffic and it's been said that the crosswalk, the people in the crosswalks, the guards, are now kinda standing to the side and waiting for crossing, actually crossing the kids over rather than directing traffic, which they've historically done. I think that may have something to do with this.
Very possible, yeah.
But I'm wondering if we could get an update from the police chief, because this morning it was pretty rough down there, too.
Okay.
A little unique compared to what it's been, but obviously, we don't want our, our traffic supervisors putting themselves in harm's way either, but I just didn't know if at that time if we might need some police presence down there, at least until all these new signage is put in, 'cause it was, it's been very different, okay?
Yeah, I know, I've also heard some things in that area. There's a lot happening there, so I think that's a great suggestion, the police chief could look at it further to see what we might do. So that's unanimous. Next, we have traffic aid request from, another traffic aid request from the police chief. Given that a number of children cross on Pearl Street between the youth center and the basketball courts, a slow children sign is warranted, and this is based on a request that came from Jen Ward, director of the youth center. So is there.
Second it.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item, new business, item F four, is a request from the moral PTO, twelve Walnut Street, to request permission for a five K fun run to be held Saturday, May thirteenth, start at ten AM. Indicated the direction, work with the police chief regarding safety thoughts and concerns. So is there any questions regarding this permit to obstruct, and if not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fun run.
I'll second that.
Everyone likes a good fun run.
I'd like to be the person rejecting the fun run. So I'll make that unanimous. We don't like fun, that would, that's, that would be the headline, I think, Kevin. Yeah. So we can still have fun here. Are there any comments or additional items from the board members, Brian, regarding new business?
No, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Will?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I actually wasn't sure whether this was brought up. I remember, I actually argued whether this should be under old business or new business. It's new to me, but.
Brian and I have struggled with this for fifteen.
Yeah, I think you guys may have talked about it at some point.
What's new in old business?
No, a year, a year ago, maybe two years ago, I went to a bar mitzvah, a bar mitzvah upstairs, and it was really good and a lot of people, they enjoyed using the, the town hall. And I've actually been recently approached about having parties here and being able to rent it out. And I don't know if we, I think you and I may have discussed it at one point, Rick, but I don't know if we have something in place or we don't have something in place. I know years ago, we had a hospital fundraiser here that was very successful and obviously, it's a big room and it was beautiful, so I just didn't know if we could kinda do a little, little research on seeing if we can, you know, have more, if people want to have more functions here. I know we do that and, Brian, you'll certainly see it on a daily basis now. We, when I worked for the Bureau of State Office buildings, we rented out the state house.
Yeah.
And we still do a number of private functions and public throughout the day. And sometimes people just wanna be in a historic building, especially, you know, we have a beautiful building here, so whether it's weddings or bar mitzvahs or reunions or fundraisers, I just wanted to know if we have a policy in place and if not, you know, is that something we wanna look at? I mean, I think it would bring in revenue, do I think it would be an exorbitant amount? Probably not, but it is a beautiful building, so when I got asked that, it kinda piqued my interest.
We do have a rental policy, mainly we've been dealing with mostly nonprofit.
Okay.
Type organizations.
I mean, we can refresh that.
Yeah, there is a fee and then obviously the custodians also, there is a fee for the custodian.
Which should be, absolutely.
So maybe it's a Saturday or.
Okay. Do you think you can just share that with us at the next meeting and then we can go from there?
I'd love to see weddings, that's a great point, I'd love to see weddings. I could see bride and groom walking down the front of that building and it's, as you said, it's a beautiful building, we should be proud of it and, yeah, good suggestion, thank you. And so we'll look at that in upcoming meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. So with that, that's the, oh, I'm sorry, I had one item of new business that I wanted to bring up. Rick, we need to, I, I know you, you touched on it, so I'm glad you hit it, that, and that specifically middle school east articles. So I want the board to come up to speed on conversations that you and I have had, and so we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting because we have to consider it in the next upcoming budget cycle. And that's specifically what, what articles, if any, we wanna have as placeholders for work that we might be entertaining in the coming year. So for example, if we wanted to engage with the general article, engage with the consulting or marketing or whatever, that's a potential, then we, we would need an article. If there's a budget transfer coming from the school, we need to understand that from both Zach and the FinCom, because the school has had this, you know, I wanna say maintenance or account, they carried it for the last year or years. So we'll see. Maybe it's a line item transfer, Rick?
Yep.
Or maybe there's a combination of line item transfer, transfer and a specific maintenance budget. What we wanna make sure is just, Rick and I have talked about this, you know, if a pipe breaks, we're not equipped, from a budgetary perspective, to be able to do anything. We wanna be able to maintain the building, safeguard it, and there's some cost of that ownership that the school has borne and maybe there's some transfer or maybe we need an article, but if nothing else, we should be talking about it.
I'd say the first thing we can do, and I don't think it's gonna cost a lot of money, can someone go in and just straighten out the shades in there so it doesn't look like a haunted building?
I'm so glad you said that, I thought it was the only one, I thought that was my own CD.
You know, it's really not, you know, investment, it looks like something out of a Freddy Krueger movie, you know?
Okay.
I, I mean, just, you know, straighten out the shades and make it look a little presentable, but.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just trying to figure out, I, I know it's up to this point, it's been the schools and I feel like we just dumped on Rick, who, whose job it is not to align the shades in the windows, but.
Rick, I'll go in there with you.
Probably not the guy you want to do it.
Yeah, we'll all go in there on a Saturday and just get the shades all, all straightened away.
Maybe, maybe we can make that the next Cub Scout project. All right, thank you. So Rick, up to now, Rick hasn't been responsible, I wanted to make that clear for the general public who might be watching tonight, the board of selectmen of the town doesn't take responsibility for that building until June. Thank you. Are there items of correspondence that the board would like to bring up or talk about, since we don't have anything specifically on the agenda? Okay.
I don't have any.
Will?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
So with that, we're gonna go into executive session and we'll be, I'll be asking for a motion on this in a second, but the purpose of the executive session is to talk with town council as it relates to Vernon Grove Union Employee Request. Second item on the agenda for executive session is town council, talking to town council regarding the Milford Water Company and discussions related to its acquisition. The third item on the town council, I mean, on the agenda for executive session is town council and specifically contract negotiations with town council. So I'll take a, take a vote, a motion and a vote.
I'll move, second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous, so go roll call now.
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. The board will not be returning to open session upon the completion of executive session. Thank you very much and good evening.